Everybody ready? School Board meeting is called to order. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Seaberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Paul.
Here.
Mrs. Bresia.
Here.
Mr. BP.
Here.
Ms. Aylin.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, seconded by Mrs. Williams, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Before we get started on superintendent's announcements and spotlights, I'd like to introduce some MEA reps that are in the audience tonight. Ms. Anna DiMaria, Vice President for Manassas Education Association, and Ms. Jenny Higginbotham, who is the ESP at large. Thank you for being here with us tonight. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford.
Thank you, Chair Seaberg. Good evening, other members of the Board, and good evening to everyone that has joined us tonight. It's nice to have so many in the audience with us this evening. I stand before you at this time to deliver our spotlights and announcements for this evening. We will start with our MCPS Spelling Bee winners. So if those will be joining us down front, would you like to come on down? We've had fun times in the Division over the last few weeks as our students participated in spelling bees at their respective schools. Ms. Sarah Weaver, Coordinator of Elective Instruction, which includes Fine Arts, World Languages, and Library and Media, will join me now to share more information about the bees and introduce our local winners. Ms. Weaver.
Good evening, Chair Seaberg. Dr. Newman, School Board, Parents, Families, and Distinguished Guests from our community. Again, my name is Sarah Weaver, and I'm the Coordinator for Electives at Manassas City. So 98 years ago, the first national spelling bee was organized by publishers of nine newspapers across the country. Our strategic plan reminds us that student achievement is our purpose, and our spelling bee is one way that we can support literacy and celebrate the accomplishments of these young scholars. Last month, Dr. Goldzung and I held school spelling bees in each of the schools, and the winners of each school spelling bee are here this evening to be recognized. These winners will go on to the regional competition held at Garfield High School in Prince William County on March 21st. We are so proud of the hard work, determination, and study skills that brought each first-place winner here tonight. It is my pleasure to spotlight the following students. Jay Shably from Baldwin Elementary. Hardik Joshi from Dean Elementary. And these two gentlemen came in second and third place in our Division B. So one day, they're going to be our Division B spelling champs, right? Awesome. And I know they'll represent us super well at regionals. And then Erin O'Perre from Round Elementary. And then Nora Bidier from Weems Elementary. Kenaya Woodson from Baldwin Intermediate. Ahmad Azam from Mayfield Intermediate. Thea Engler from Hayden Elementary. And then I saw Lamar. And Lamar, I don't want to butcher your name. Where are you? I think you're in the middle. Abba Kuller from Metz Middle School. Congratulations. We'll look forward to seeing you guys March 21st. Okay? Alright, so you can take pictures. Yeah.
Congratulations. Thank you all so much. We don't mind letting people have their moment with their families. That's wonderful. And they spell some really hard words, I will tell you. It was a very tough competition, and they all did a great job. So at this time, we have a Special Education, Special Olympics announcement. Mr. Brian Masiak, Director of Special Education, is here tonight to share an announcement with us about an upcoming special event. Mr. Masiak.
Good evening, Chair Seaberg, Vice Chair Stevens, School Board, and Dr. Newman. At this time, I'm going to ask Annabella and Ms. Helton to join me up front. Annabella and Mrs. Helton would like to cordially invite you to our Big Feet Meet, which will be held on March 24th at Osborne High School. Our rain date, which we won't need, is March 31st. At this event, student athletes from Manassas City and Manassas Park will participate in a variety of sports and recreational activities. There will be an opportunity for community building through a touch truck with vehicles from the Manassas City Police Department, Manassas City Fire and Rescue, Manassas Park Police Department, Prince William County Police Department, and the Prince William County Sheriff's Office. There will be a torch run conducted by local police departments, followed by our wonderful center stage performing the National Anthem. We anticipate 170 athletes, which means there's 170 buddies. Students from Center Stage are 17. 23 students from our Photography Department at Osborne. 39 student volunteers to run stations. 40-plus adult volunteers. So if you're counting, that's well over 450 volunteers and athletes before we count teachers, etc. So Annabella and Mrs. Helton would like to present you with some invitations to the event.
Yes, we are looking forward to our event. And the other Board members, Ms. Garza is handing those invitations to you as well.
Thank you.
The National Association of School Resource Officers encourages schools and communities to recognize the valuable work of their school resource officers during National School Resource Officer Appreciation Day, which will be observed nationally tomorrow, February 15th. SROs are carefully selected, specifically trained, sworn law enforcement officers assigned by our local police department to work with schools using community-oriented policing concepts. The SRO assignment is unique within the law enforcement profession. These officers fill a three-part role, serving as informal mentors or counselors, law educators, and law enforcement officers to support our students and community. They are valuable and essential members of the MCPS family. At this time, I'd like to ask our school resource officers to join us up front. Officer Kenyatta Grigsby from Osborne High School. Officer Brian Hogan, Metz Middle School. Officer Chris Jones from Baldwin Intermediate School. And Officer Trey Lawler, Mayfield Intermediate School. The officers are led by Sergeant Brent Stump, Community Services with the Manassas City Police Department. So you can join us up front as well. And at this time, I have the National School Resource Officers Day proclamation issued by the National Association of School Resource Officers. And I'd like to read that in your hearing. Whereas the National Association of School Resource Officers is dedicated to making schools and children safer by providing the highest-quality training to school-based law enforcement officers, whereas school resource officers, SROs, bridge gaps between youth and law enforcement and embrace a triad concept of school policing, serving in informal counseling, education, and law enforcement roles to support students and communities they serve. Whereas by training law enforcement officers to counsel, educate, and protect school communities, the men and women of the National School Resource Officer Association continuously lead by example and promote a positive image of law enforcement to schoolchildren and school communities. Whereas SRO programs across the globe are founded as collaborative efforts by police agencies, law enforcement officers, educators, students, parents, and communities to create safe learning environments, provide valuable resources to school staff members, foster positive relationships with students, and develop strategies to resolve problems that affect youth with the goal of protecting all children so they can reach their fullest potential. And whereas school resource officers are valuable and essential members of the education community and deserve unwavering respect and support from the public in the pursuit of keeping schools and students safe. Now therefore, the National Association of School Resource Officers hereby proclaims February 15th as School Resource Officer Appreciation Day, a special day to show appreciation for school-based law enforcement officers and encourages all citizens to show their gratitude with displays of support and personal messages. Thank you all for everything you do for our students and our school community. And I do have a copy of the proclamation for each of you. Thank you all for being here tonight. Okay, last week, we joined the American School Counselor Association, or ASCA, in highlighting the tremendous impact school counselors have in our schools. National School Counseling Week is always celebrated the first full week in February. The 2023 theme is "School Counselors Helping Students Dream Big." We thank our MCPS counselors for being actively engaged in helping students examine their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, for working in a partnership with parents as they encounter the challenges of raising children in today's world, for focusing on positive ways to enhance students' academic career and social-emotional development, and working with teachers and other educators to provide an educational system where students can realize their potential and set healthy, realistic, and optimistic aspirations for themselves. Several members of our school counseling program are here tonight and will represent the family of counselors that support our students in so many valuable ways. So at this time, I will call them by school. From Baldwin Elementary, Anna Bang and Heather Hartman. From Jenny Dean Elementary, Tammy Schaefer and Lisa Openheim. From Hayden Elementary, Sarah Myers and Ally Nielsen. Over at Round Elementary, we have Stephen Green and Nicola Richards. From Weems Elementary, Edzeta Colon-Vargas and Amy Miller. At Baldwin Intermediate, we have Lori White. At Mayfield Intermediate, Amber Duchess, Robert Vaverneck, Lisa LaScola, and Liz Thomason. At Metz Middle School, Danae Overton, Bridget Cepha, Tim Tibbs, Carmen Perez, and Keeson Wigfall. At Osborne High School, we have Amanda Farantino, Emily Morales, Stephanie Greth, Peter Uncles, Ilionez Ramos Chavez, St. Clair Phillips, Paul Stansberry, Carissa Michaels, Juliet Violet, Cherish Skinker, and Robert Yarborough. At our central office, we have Shema Bautista and Dr. Monique Colwell, who is here. And at this time, as you stand before us, I'd like to read the proclamation for School Counseling Week. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed in helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, he, Dr. Kevin Newman, Superintendent of Manassas City Public Schools, does hereby proclaim February 6th through the 10th, 2023, as National School Counseling Week. Thank you all for everything, and thanks for representing the counseling family. Oh, gosh. Quick adjustment. Thank you. I have a lot of papers here, so... The Virginia School Boards Association has designated February 14th through the 18th as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week with the goal of building awareness of the role Board clerks play in assisting school board members, superintendents, and local schools. Our clerk, Mrs. Garza, is dedicated to ensuring the school board has all the necessary tools to fulfill their roles in serving our school community. Whether creating board meeting agendas, managing board member calendars, including special appearances and board professional development, a great deal of coordination is required, and Mrs. Garza juggles it all well as she works on behalf of the Board and our superintendent. It's a night of proclamations, so please allow me to share the following on behalf of Clerk Appreciation. Whereas school board clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and dispersments, and a record of all official acts, and whereas school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of his or her county or city as may be required by the school board, and whereas school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media on behalf of the school board and superintendent. And whereas school board clerks, in the performance of their duties, are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings, and whereas school board clerks join with school boards to help ensure that students achieve to their highest potential. And whereas school board clerks provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents, the VSPA Board of Directors does hereby recognize the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas the School Board of the City of Manassas joins the VSPA in recognizing the many and varied contributions of school board clerks, now therefore be it resolved that at its meeting on the 14th day of February 2023, the School Board of the City of Manassas also recognizes the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. At this time, I would like to turn the mic over to Mrs. Paul, who will continue with our recognition. Ms. Garza.
Coming down.
And Mr. Hawkins, if you are here, please join us.
Okay, that was an amazing and accurate resolution. And we on School Board all want to thank Ms. Garza and Mr. Hawkins for all they do to support our schools. Tonight, we have a little treat for the audience in that journalism students Amelia Breeden and Medina Habib have interviewed Mr. Hawkins and Ms. Garza about their roles as school board clerks. The Talon staff pride themselves on equal coverage of topics such as fashion, sports, fine arts, and inclusivity. We would like to introduce Medina and Amelia, who will now share with you a teaser about what they learned during their interview of Mr. Hawkins and Ms. Garza for School Board Clerk Appreciation Week.
So on Friday, February 3rd, we had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Hawkins and Mrs. Garza and found them easy and interesting to interview. Throughout the interviewing process, we learned many fascinating things, like how Ms. Garza came here from El Salvador when she was 11, and how budgeting and conflicts affect Mr. Hawkins' day-to-day schedule. Although both of them agree that their job is very time-consuming, in the end, they found it extremely rewarding in many ways. To continue our goal of more coverage and inclusivity on the Talon, we have created a section especially for our Manassas luminaries, like you guys at the school board. And as we hope to cover more things about the school board members, we will be reaching out to some of you very soon. And with class elections coming up, we couldn't be any more proud to be a part of the journalism team.
Thank you, girls, and thank you all for spending your Valentine's Day with us.
We have some presentations for our clerks.
Oh, come, no, don't leave.
We also have a certificate for Ms. Garza and for Mr. Hawkins, who serves as our Deputy Clerk of the Board. And we will be sharing the link to the article that they wrote in the morning on our social media and on our website and sending it out to our community. So please check it out. It was very well-written and very informative about our clerks. Thank you all. That concludes our announcements and spotlights for the evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Up next on our agenda is Board Committee reports, and I believe we have a report from the Educational Support Committee, Mrs. Paul.
Yes, thank you. The Educational Support Committee met today on several issues. We heard from RRMM on enclosing JLC walkway for safety of students. And we heard from, or we went over the MGT Consulting Report regarding the design of our school and the configuration of grades. Next steps would be to make recommendations to the full Board at the next meeting, hopefully.
And that was on Dean, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Citizens Comments. Are there any citizens that would wish to speak this evening? Anyone at all? Moving along, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries seven zero. Next up is our discussion agenda, student achievement, and we will have Ms. Christine Taylor, Supervisor of Career and Technical Education, providing information on work-based learning opportunities for students and business partnerships. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, School Board Committee members, Dr. Newman, and a special welcome and thank you to our student representatives as well tonight. So, thank you for having me. It's the perfect evening to spread a little love about C T E, so I will try and connect it all. February has always been Career and Technical Education Month. I'm so privileged to say that I get an entire month to celebrate C T E, and so it's exciting all of the happenings, and I'm very happy to share those with you this evening. The City of Manassas' strategic plan directly connects with our work-based learning. Inclusive and collaborative learning environment, each student will feel safe and supported in their learning environment. The quality workforce pillar, which each student benefits from high-quality instruction based on data-informed decisions and implementing best practices, definite connection to work-based learning, and then our last pillar, strong family and community partnerships, and students will be part of a system that supports their academic and personal goals. Not only in Manassas, uh, the Manassas City Public Schools strategic plan, but also in the City of Manassas' strategic plan incorporates work-based learning. Under their educational attainment pillar, we will be a city that partners with the education and business community to create an innovative, engaging, inspiring, and challenging learning environment for all students and adult learners that fuels the workforce for tomorrow. Fueling the workforce for tomorrow is definitely one of our goals for the strategic plan in incorporating work-based learning into our schools. Work-based learning offers students an opportunity for real-world experiences, when they get to take everything they've learned in the classroom and go out and try it out, practice, perfect it, grow the skills that we've planted the seeds for. They extend the classroom, they complement our content knowledge, and so everything that they've learned, again, putting out into the workforce. They practice workplace readiness skills, that's an area where our students definitely have an opportunity for growth. We can work on it in the classrooms through team projects, project-based learning, but it's different when you're out into the real world of work and you're working with a wide range of people. They can explore and plan their careers, they can try something out, see if it's going to be a good fit, see if it works with their strengths and their talents, and there's room for growth. Work-based learning is inclusive for all of our students. We have programs for E L Ls, adaptive curriculum, advanced program, and our underserved population. And I'll share a little bit about those programs this evening. Highlighting work-based learning opportunities and M C P S. I have to tell you, I had to rein myself in, there's a whole lot out there that's really good that's going on, so tonight is just a smattering of those, lots more is hidden, but I'll share some highlights with you tonight. So, School-Based Enterprise, we currently have 93 students enrolled in our School-Based Enterprise. These students manage an entrepreneurial operation within a school setting. These would be our auto tech classes, and they serve cars in the community, preventative maintenance, so things like oil changes and tire rotations. I think they do do some brakes and alternator work. Thankfully, I haven't needed those. Cosmetology, your beautification needs are met through Ms. Dodevalla's cosmetology students, and you can come in and get those needs met on Fridays by making a simple appointment. And so, we also have our adaptive curriculum students in School-Based Enterprise, and I'll share those with you in a second. But these students have an opportunity to run a small business within their class period, and so that prepares them with business plans and serving the community and working with customers and all those good things that come with that experience and those practices. You'll notice that on this slide, I had to control myself, I kept them to one slide, but they're phenomenal students in our adaptive curriculum program, and they work with our Northern Virginia Food and Rescue Program. They do a local pet company, they're learning how to bathe puppy dogs and walk them and feed them, all while working on their communication skills so that they can interact with the community. And they also hold shops for various holidays, and I think I've seen a few familiar faces at some of their sales. And so I did want to spotlight those students tonight. Clinical experiences, we currently have 43 students enrolled in our E M T and C N A classes. These students prepare usually in the fall for the curriculum work, and right now, our C N A students are out into the field completing 40 hours of clinical time at Lake Manassas Health and Rehab, and they're hosting our students for all 31 of them in their 40 hours of time, so we're very grateful for that partnership. Our E M T students are getting ready, they got their background checks today, and they are working with the Manassas City Fire and Rescue Department, and they'll be doing ride-alongs with them shortly, so we're very excited. The great part of our clinical experiences, work-based learning, is that these students will receive a credential, provided they pass their credentialing exam, so soon enough, hopefully, we'll have 31 new certified nurse aides, and we will have, my math isn't very good, so 15, 14, 15 students in our E M T program to be certified E M Ts. Our externship, this is a program that offers work-based learning that's a little bit more complicated, a little bit more in-depth, and a little bit more enriched than job shadowing. It requires 40 hours, students go out into the field, and they'll, I chose some variety of pictures, like some are in a bakery, some are working in auto tech, some are at a fast-food place or a landscape, or doing some construction work. They don't necessarily have projects on their own, but they participate, they shadow the people that they're working with. It's an opportunity to ask questions about the career path and if it would be a good fit for them, so they get to try out some of their skills and see if it's something that would help them grow. We currently have 40 students enrolled in our externship program. In our internships, we have seven students enrolled, we have students that are placed actually in the environment, in the workforce, usually paid, we have very, none of our students this year are unpaid. It requires 280 hours of time, so these students were enrolled in work-based learning right at the start of the school year. But we have students that are at Shehe, they have six of our students, we have J T C, which is a computer company, and they have two students there, and Manassas City Vehicle Maintenance, Joey Frazier is currently working there with the City of Manassas, and I think one of the best connections is, our city is fulfilling their commitment to the strategic plan and involving our kids with work-based learning, so it's exciting, we're piloting a student there this year, and they did a nice write-up in their city connection paper, so I put that little glimpse on there. The students that are at Shehe are working on basic preventative maintenance, things that they've learned in the class with Mr. Riley in auto tech, and then they're able to show their skills, and according to their boss, they're doing great. The next one is service learning. This is not necessarily what you might think it is, it's not community service. Service learning is where students apply the skills that they've learned in their class and improve their community through project development. So, we have 96 students enrolled, most of these students are in our Intro to Marketing class, they are creating a need for us, so they've looked at their school community to create a project. Those students have created a logo that says Manassas City Public Schools C T E. We have a business sponsor who has sponsored our uniform shirts for work-based learning for our students, so our Intro to Marketing class is creating those students for our, or those shirts for our students. And so, they're going to be putting the logo on and our sponsor on the sleeve, and then doing a reflection to see how that community need has been met. They had a lot of paperwork to do prior, in that they had to come up with a plan, they had to look at the needs in the, in the community, so they chose our school community, but it could be a business community. They chose the school, they surveyed the classes, they surveyed people, and then they came up with a community need, and so this is what they decided to practice their talents on, so we're excited to have those 96 students in service learning. I will mention too, next year, I know it's coming down the road, we're hoping to implement service learning in our Economics and Personal Finance class, which will support our students who may or may not be able to leave the school day or have it in their schedule to do work-based learning, we're going to bring work-based learning to them in their coursework, and so lots of work ahead for that. Mentorship, we currently have seven students enrolled, we have one community sponsor, we have seven students and four mentors. Tomorrow, we have our chip and chat, so we do a couple of in-person opportunities for a whole group event with our mentors and mentees, this is the second time we'll be hosting a social for them, and then they meet with their mentors anywhere from one, once every two weeks, to once a week, it just depends on the student and the mentor. It can be done, most of it's done in person, some is done via Zoom, we provide a place for the students to meet with their mentors during their advisory period. We have guest speakers come in, we have a phenomenal empowerment speaker coming in to talk to our students and their mentees or mentors, and then we also have a field trip coming up to Thomas Jefferson School of Science Technology, which is Tech Extravaganza, and that is in, that's in May, so they'll also be going on a field trip with them. The unique piece of the mentorship is that this particular partnership had the same desire we did to start mentoring early, so these students are mentored ninth through 12th grade, which I think will be a great support, and we're hoping to grow this program. Overall, we have 286 students currently enrolled in a high-quality work-based learning experience. This was our soft start this year, it's grown a little faster than we thought, I guess good things, have a habit of steamrolling into big things, so that's a good thing, but our goal in Career and Technical Education is to enroll every student at Osborne High School into a high-quality work-based learning experience prior to graduation. We have lots of choices, hoping to really curtail each individual with an experience that will benefit them. One size does not fit all with work-based learning. Those were all the formal work-based learning experiences we have. We also have a lot of informal work-based opportunities. We had Career and Conversation Day, we had about 550 students, talked to 34 businesses in our library this past fall, those students were in grades nine through 12, and the opportunity to just expose them to different careers, ask questions, listen to the skills and talents that businesses are looking for and how they might fit in. We also had Aviation Day, this was out at the airport, we had 80 students from Manassas City Public Schools. We combined three school systems that day to put this on for our students, there were about 30 companies, and the students were from grades seven through 12, so definitely trying to incorporate students from a younger age. V Dot Career Day, this is the Virginia Department of Transportation out at the Prince William Fairgrounds, we had 10 through 12th graders. That Career Day was very specific to a certain age group, so some of the things that we offer have a little bit of different parameters, depending on who's hosting, and we had 50 students who attended that day to learn all about careers in Northern Virginia. Career Connections, we offer once a month, each month is a different topic, this coming month, here in February, we're hosting criminal justice. We open the floor up to any student who's interested in the career of the month. We have a cafe style where students can come, grab a cup of coffee or a cup of juice and a donut, and get to do a round robin and visit different businesses, and they can share what a typical day is like, starting salary, classes that you might be interested in taking now if you want to pursue a career path in that particular area. We usually have anywhere from 30 to 40 students who attend those career days. Local field trips to businesses, we've had a couple this year, we, I know some of you have joined me on some of those, and some of you are joining me next week on another one, but it's been very, very positive to take our students out of their comfortable school setting and put them into a business and have them look around, check out what it looks like in the real world, what does an office look like, what does a meeting room look like, what are some of the things you discuss at the table, what are some of the issues that surface, but not just in necessarily in one career path, but in all aspects of the company, which is really nice for the kids to see as well. Career Building Events, we do a lot of things to support kids in general, K through 12. Some of those are, we do have career fairs, and so we're at Osborne this spring, we'll host another one, last year was extremely well-attended, it is open to any student in Osborne High School, and that's usually supported through our career counselor, Juliet Violet. One Million Cups, I know that Eric Godwin has been at One Million Cups, we have taken several students to One Million Cups, and we have a couple students who will be presenting at One Million Cups this spring, so we're really excited. We have two students who actually have an LLC and have their own business, and so they've been preparing their PowerPoints and getting ready for that discussion, so we'll practice a little bit more, but then you will hopefully see them at One Million Cups. We do job shadowing, last year was virtual, this year a lot more in person, we've also hold different Skills USA Leadership Seminars and Business Days for our students, and then tonight, Eric Godwin is actually representing us at I to I, which is Instruction to Industry. It is a virtual career fair, it happens every night this week, last year there were about several thousand students. This is a partnership with nine different school districts that we've been working on, and so we're happy that we can offer that to our Manassas City students as well. We have Women in Trades Lunch and Learn Series, that's new this year, we have a business who is sponsoring lunch every month this school year while the kids are in session, it is for women, and they bring in a wide range of speakers, women in non-traditional occupations, to encourage, support, and enrich our students, and hopefully instill in them desire or maybe spark a desire to possibly do something that's not a traditional career. So, you'll see the first one is down there on the left there, and we had a speaker from the Virginia Tire and Auto, and it's a woman who started in the shop, worked her way up, and I do believe she's the vice president now, so. And then we also have Love My Life, this is a luncheon learn for students at the intermediate level, and we have a couple of Osborne graduates who've reached out to us to give back to their school, and so we have them coming in and talking. Last month was a software engineer who writes software for naval ships, and so she works with a company that does that, so it was great, and the kids were really excited about it. And then last but not least, we hosted a work-based learning information session, this is the very first time we've done it, we've gotten, we had 40 businesses represented, we had about 50, 51 participants, all wanting to support our students. Now, I say that loosely, there's lots of ways to support our kids, so some of their responses were a formal work-based learning partnership would benefit them and their business, others of them offered support through an informal work-based learning support, so that might be job shadowing, being a guest speaker, being part of a capstone project. The great part about this community here in Manassas, which I feel so grateful to be part of, is that when I came here, one of the questions I asked in my interview was, "How many students are C T E students?", and the instant response I got was, "Every one of them." And that was the thing for me, that's why I took the job, every single one of our kids is a C T E student, and I firmly believe that. But with that, we couldn't do work-based learning without our business community, and so I just want to share my gratitude for all of you sitting here on the school board. I have seen so many of you at so many of our, sorry, at so many of our functions, our events, our field trips, so I just want to, just a sincere note of gratitude to say thank you for not only talking the talk, but walking it with me and our team. I couldn't do it without your support, but it is incredible to go out into the Manassas community and know that 40- community and know that 40 businesses came last Thursday just because they want to be part of something great. We are great. Our students are great. They have so much to offer and so much opportunity for growth. And so I do want to say thank you. As far as what's next, you'll have to keep your eyes open. There's a whole lot coming next. I'm just getting started. But more importantly, it's not just me, it's our community and it's my CTE team. And so I'm probably going to embarrass Tara, but I'm going to say thank you to Tara Eason. She is part of our CTE team. She's our CTE career coordinator. And Eric Godwin, who would have been here tonight helping to present, but is always doing work-based learning, and so he is not here as well. But this is not a one-person, one-person team. This is at least a three, plus all the business community, all of our school community, our teachers, our staff, our students. We're one big whole, and you get all of us when you do CTE. So I just want to say thank you to my team and thank you to the school board and all of the businesses who might be here tonight or watching tonight that have reached out. You do make a difference in our students' lives, and you do make a difference in the careers and the experiences that they will get because you're willing to partner, because you're willing to take a risk, and you're willing to help grow them and help them be their best self. And for that, I am very grateful.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Should we clap?
No doubt, no.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I have to share with everybody that between you and Eric, I have seen both, one of you out and about in the community everywhere. So I truly appreciate all your hard work and the way you're representing Manassas City Public Schools. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks for noticing. Anyone else? Mr. Hollingsworth.
I'm just jumping on, again, just a statement, but 286 students, a soft start, and ending it with, "We're just getting started." Great job, awesome.
Thank you.
What he said, I mean, this is amazing that, you know, we're at this point at the beginning. And it was a wonderful presentation, the information event last week. Yeah.
Time warp, Thursday.
Yeah. It was, it was a great presentation. You guys did an amazing job. I was happy to be there as, you know, school board and a local business, and I'm looking forward to that business part. So thank you for everything.
We know where to find her.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks.
Any other comments or statements?
Mine's quick. Okay.
I just want to reiterate, yes, thank you for your concise report about an exploding program at Metz and Osborne. And I want to reiterate your thanks to the business community who are supporting our dream. Thank you.
Mrs. Bresia.
So I'll echo what everybody else said, 286 kids and a soft start, that's awesome. That's a lot of, it's a strong start and a lot of room for growth, and so, and I appreciate your energy and enthusiasm. It's really an important part of the job. I did have some questions, so I hope you don't mind. So I went to the community event and I did the tour of the CTE facilities, and I did not get a chance to ask this question there. But for the auto shop, are those combustion engines or are those hybrid electric that they're working on?
I do believe they have both come in, but I just want to reiterate too, so it's preventative maintenance. So they're not really doing a lot of electrical work on the electric cars. That would require a different certification than what we offer. But does he work on both? Yes, but what they're doing for the maintenance is fairly limited.
Well, as the auto market continues to change, is there a plan to bring electric in?
Absolutely. We've got to get with the times.
Yeah. I'm buying a new, we're in the process of buying a new car now, so this is very ripe for me. So I know the community event that you guys had was very well-attended. I wasn't, you know, I wasn't sure what I was going to see when I walked in. I was very pleasantly surprised. You guys have really been doing the work to be out there in the community to recruit. What is the follow-up plan with all the businesses that came in? How are you going to be making sure that everybody who showed an interest actually gets the paperwork in their hands?
Yeah. So we had 19 businesses who requested a formal partnership with us for work-based learning, 22 businesses who requested an informal partnership with us. Some of those are double, like some of those would want the informal and the formal. So the next steps, actually, we met today on the next step, so we've reviewed all the great surveys that we got. We got some phenomenal, very constructive ways to support our program, to make changes, to move forward. We are going to create the list of 19, split it up amongst the three of us, and start visiting.
All right.
So my husband's in charge for dinner for like the next three weeks.
Yeah. That would, this is, I was wondering how this was going for your department, because there's only three of you, and there's a lot that's happening very quickly. So are you feeling on top of it? Are you feeling?
Tell you what, I'm on top of the world. I am so excited with my team. I do believe we have a very effective team, but I don't want to discount, though, those that help us that aren't technically part of the CTE team. Our CTE teachers are part of the team, but they have a different role. Those teachers have gone out, they have helped us gain partnerships, they have worked with their students. If they've come to them and said, "I'd like an apprenticeship, I'd like a youth-registered apprenticeship, I'm looking for an internship." So our CTE is much bigger than just the three of us, although we are pretty mighty. But we have our teachers, we have our business community. Our business community is just so willing to take that chance with our students with the intent of hopefully growing their own. They're hoping that if they invest in our students, they'll become employees. I know our gentleman from Shee He has always reached out, already reached out and said, "Okay, I've got some seniors here, what are you guys thinking about doing?" And so the investment for the businesses is truly growing their own. They want to groom them, they want to train them, they want to prepare them. And as always, we want to keep our Osborne kids here at home, right? And so Manassas is plenty big for that. We have lots of businesses and opportunities, and slowly but surely, our whole CTE team, businesses, teachers, and I won't forget the parents as well. We've had some phenomenal staunch supporters of parents who have helped us get internships for their students or work-based learning opportunities for them as well as our students. So it's a big group.
Okay. You know, sometimes when organizations grow quickly, you have a little like phantom email phenomenon with someone who's interested in helping out, sends an email to the interest form, and then because you're so busy, nobody gets back to them, but you don't feel like that's happening.
Not at all. We have some processes in place to prevent that, and so between the three of us, we meet pretty regularly and divide up the work and move forward with it. So I don't feel like we're there. Not yet.
And so I have some questions for you on your mentorship program, because this seems like there, we have only seven students enrolled, we only have four mentors. I feel like there's really a lot of room to grow. You know, if we on the board each got one person to sign up for the mentorship program, we could, you know, more than double the mentorship program, you know? So I wanted to hear a little bit more about that. Personally, in my life, I know a lot of people who are retired who might be interested in doing this. Can you be retired? Do you have to be currently working to participate?
No, so there's no parameters, really. We just need an adult over the age of 21 who's interested in supporting a student. And so we have a mentoring training that we would go through for any mentors that would want to commit to a student. This year, we actually weren't thinking about mentoring, except that one of our very prominent business partners in the community reached out to us and said, "Hey, I have four engineers who want to mentor students." We said, "Okay." And so at the very start of this year, we worked with our school counselors to identify students who needed some mentoring, looking at their maybe absenteeism in seventh or eighth grade, looking at their current grade level, grades, those types of things to make a good fit or a good match. And so we had an opportunity to bring in the mentors, the mentees, their families, and MCPS at our business site, and they hosted them for dinner one night, and we got to meet them. And the mentees got to see where their mentors worked, what their job entailed, and their families begun a relationship with not just the business, but the mentors themselves as well as the mentees. So it was a nice, a nice way to start. And then since then, we've just continued to grow. But again, I think there's lots of opportunities for a mentorship. I believe very strongly that mentoring some of our students starting in ninth grade would be able to support them through 12th grade, especially during some of those tough times or their family situations, or maybe they don't get what they need in their own personal life, but that's something that we could help with here at school to support their academic success as well as their personal success.
So the kids who sign up for this, do the kids sign up for this program, or does their guidance counselor like call them up and say, hey?
No, no.
Sorry, school counselor, school counselor. Call them up and say, you know, we're getting you into this.
No, it was completely optional. We did not force any child to get a mentor. So the mentors, we had an information meeting, and those that were interested in getting a mentor after the information meeting, obviously, we worked with our school counseling team to identify students. We invited them during advisory to come in and talk. We shared with them the role of a mentor, how they could be supportive, and why they were there. And that habits, creating good habits and strong leadership skills is really important for success, and that we wanted to see them grow. And then from there, we had seven students who responded and said, "Yes, we'd like a mentor." And so we ended, we paired those students up with a mentor.
And what is the time commitment like for the mentors?
So that varies from student to student. We have some students, we have a couple of students who have a rough personal home life, and so they're relying quite a bit on their mentors for support. And so that student gets help one or more times a week. The students have a platform where they can email them through their school email, the mentors, and then they respond. The mentors are phenomenal. We had one student who emailed the mentor at like 10:00, 10:30 at night, had just had an argument, et cetera, and then that mentor reached out to that student that evening. And so our mentors are very committed to our students' success. We have other students who want to just talk about careers and career paths and career options. We have other students who want to talk about their extracurricular activities or other things that they can do. So it just depends on the student. Some of our students are mentored once every two weeks. So the time commitment can be as great or as little as you, as you want.
I think that's it from me. Thank you.
Sure. Mrs. Stevens.
Sorry, I was kind of thinking about this. So this is kind of a first for me. I don't have any questions. So be shocked, it may only happen ever once. But I just wanted to say, this really gives me warm fuzzies to see that there are so many people, other than just those who are educators, who see the potential in our kids, who see who and what they can grow up to become, and who see them as future leaders. And that's a really special thing, and I wish there was some way we could broadcast it out to the greater community, because there are so many folks who don't realize who our kiddos are and that they're leaders in the making. They've, they've got their sights set on something special, and that there are all these adults and businesses around them who want to help them be there. So I am looking forward to hearing a lot more and to seeing how the program grows and where we take our kids in the future. And then hopefully, one day, having graduates come back and tell their success stories, because I think that's important for us to hear, and I think it's important for everyone to hear. So thank you. Thank you to everyone for the hard work. I mean, it's great. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. I know that I appreciated hearing more about all the different aspects in this work-based learning environment, from internships to the service learning, to externships, the mentorships. It's good to know a little bit more about it, and we look forward to more great things. So thank you very much for your presentation this evening.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Next up on our agenda is, on the action agenda, we need to take a look at our budget calendar, the 2024 Budget Development Calendar under Finance and Operations. Mr. Andy Hawkins.
Good evening. I wanted, we needed to make the change. Since the state has made an error in the information that they send to us, and they are, have been delayed in sending that information to us, we, we were supposed to present the superintendent's proposed budget tonight, and we were asking to move it to our next school board meeting on the 28th. And so the schedule would go as follows. We'll have the superintendent's proposed budget on February 28th, and we'll have a work session on March the 7th with the school board, have a public input meeting on the 14th of March, and then we'll have budget work sessions on March the 16th and the 21st as needed, and then school board approval is scheduled for March 28th. And we have scheduled presentation to city council on April the 12th at Public Works. All of this, of course, is subject to the General Assembly adjourning on time and presenting and preparing a budget themselves. So they're scheduled to adjourn on, on February 26th. So the reason we were asking for an adjustment is because of delayed information from the city, I mean, from the state, sorry.
Understood. Any questions from the board? Can I get a motion?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas adopt, approve the revised FY24 budget calendars presented.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Spall, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the revised FY24 budget calendar as presented. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you all. Next up is board member comments, and I'd like to start with our student representatives. Mr. Beepe.
Thank you, everyone. First, I would like to acknowledge the sad news of one of our OHS students who recently passed away. Although I do not know this student personally, I would like to extend my condolences to their friends and family, as we all know, losing a loved one is very difficult. I would also like to say, please reach out to someone if you are struggling with this news, so you can get the support that you need during this time. Next, I would like to say thank you, and, or say thank, or congratulations to the students who are recognized for placing in the Spelling Bee. I would like to say thank you to our school resource officers who do their best to make us feel safe at school. I would like to thank our counselors, especially the ones at Osborne who have helped me during my own college application process, so that I can receive the acceptances that I have today. And lastly, I would like to thank our school board clerks who play a vital role in the function of this system and make it easier for all of us to function in our own roles. So thank you, and that's all I have for this evening. Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day. Ms. Island.
Hello, I just like to remind everybody that we have Monday off, and I also like to say, I also like to say thank you to our clerks, counselors, and SROs. You guys have helped us so much, and I hope everybody had a great Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Ms. Island. Mrs. Bresia.
I'm recovering from laryngitis, I'm going to make this brief. You know, thank you to our school board clerks for all the work that you do, the school counselors, the SROs, and congratulations to our Spelling Bee winners. Very happy to be a part of the division here. Great stuff happening every day. I wanted to acknowledge a student that passed away at Osborne, it's a very sad circumstance. You know, we are, but we're all thinking of her and her family. And I also wanted to thank the Educational Support Committee for taking on the tough work of the Dean Project and all that stuff. Thank you guys for investing the time and energy into that. And yeah, happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Mrs. Spall.
Yes, I'd like to kind of cut to the chase and thank the school board liaisons for always being so appropriate and mentioning everyone that we already saw tonight. They were all excellent winners and acknowledgements, and they all deserve to have their time. I would like to say that if any of the tidbits about Ms. Garza or Mr. Hawkins piqued your interest tonight, please find the rest of the article in the Talon. That can be found at ohstalon.com, which is Osborne Student News website, produced entirely by Ms. Miller's Generalism Students. I also wanted to, I guess, say happy CTE month. Regarding the purchase of Central Office at 8700 Centerville Road, we've received what I would call unfavorable reply to our request to purchase 8700 Centerville Road. And just for the record, I'd like to publicly request when on any agenda this decision was made. Our lease is due to be renewed on the purchase decision, or purchase decision be made on or before the 28th of February. And it may be my mistake, but I so far have not seen any minutes where an actual council vote was taken. So I just wanted to go on record for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Well said. Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Chair Seberg. Of course, I want to thank all the spotlights, the Spelling Bee winners. We appreciate our SROs and their, in our schools, they do a lot. I'd also like to thank the counselors as well. They helped me a lot during my students' college application process, so I, I feel you. I understand. And I also want to thank Annabella for the invitation in March, and I'm excited, looking forward to that. Adina and Amelia, I loved your presentation tonight. It was, I can't wait to read all about our clerks who help us every day, every evening, sometimes on the weekends. So I really appreciate all that you do for us. And at that, that's all I have to say. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Yes, Chair. Thank you. In the spirit of Black History Month, I'd like to go a step beyond the Martin Luther King and the Rosa Parks and recognize hidden figures that normally wouldn't be recognized. And so I'd just like to share one with, about Robert Smith, Robert Smalls, who was born enslaved. Robert Smalls hijacked a Confederate ship, selling his passengers, including his family, to freedom. He went on to become a Reconstruction-era leader and a advocate for public education. And then he went on to serve five terms as, in the House of Representatives. Black history is American history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. I also want to say congratulations to the spelling bee winners. Spelling is a tricky thing, and, you know, it takes a lot to be able to try and, you know, work through those and take your time to, you know, they don't, they, they spend extra time doing that, and it's, it's commendable. And also, you know, special shout-outs to our SROs and our counselors. They, they do amazing work in the schools and have a very needed job. And also, thank you for the CTE presentation. Again, it, it was amazing, and it's, it's just phenomenal to see where we're going with our, our schools and our city, and, and I'm proud to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Stevens?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to discuss briefly something serious within the community, not necessarily our community, but widespread in education today. I know we've all heard on the news recently about overdoses and the loss of a student due to overdose. I know it's been on the back of our minds, not here at this school or in Manassas City, but in the area. And I know it's something that as parents and educators, it's really on our minds, and we really worry about it. And I'm sure the community would like to know what Manassas City Public Schools is doing to educate, protect our students. Couple things going on. There's the E3 series, which is put on by the Manassas City Police Department at Osborne High School. The next E3 series is March twenty-second on substance abuse prevention. I've been a mom for thirty years. I've been to every E3 series event this year, and I've learned something at every event. So if I can learn something, everybody can learn something. Please make a plan to attend. They do serve dinner. Usually it's Chick-fil-A, so I think that's a community draw. There will also be sign-ups for community members, parents, caregivers, adults, to be trained for Narcan, to use Narcan. The training ta, the signup table will be set up by the CSP board at their table. I also wanted to share, we do have an anonymous tip line on the MCPS website and on the MCPSVA app, where you can make an anonymous tip about any concern. If you see something, say something. Please encourage your kiddos to do the same. It is completely anonymous. Then I wanted to share a couple things, and thank you, Dr. Thomas, for sharing these with us. I hope you're okay with me sharing this information. All our nurses and clinics, clinic assistants have been trained in Narcan administration, and Narcan is accessible in every clinic. There are going to be training Narcan sessions for administrators and other designated staff mid-March. I am just today signed up for a Narcan training session, February twenty-second, at Osborne High School. School nurses will be certified administration instructors by the end of March, so they can instruct other people on how to use Narcan. Monthly Narcan training will be made available to all MCPS staff via the Frontline Platform. All SROs have been trained, and it has been requested that they will be able to carry Narcan on their person. That has not been approved yet, but I am hopeful that it will be approved, because when we have a student who overdoses, every minute counts. And the first people who are usually there are the people who are in the classroom and in the building. Another thing, there was something up, but I, I think those were the big things that I wanted to share that we are doing to address the opiate addiction, the overdose crisis that we're experiencing right now. If you're concerned about your student, your child, please reach out. Better be safe than sorry, because it only takes one moment. And finally, I do want to echo Ms. Spall's request that there be a formal vote by the city council in relation to eighty-seven-hundred Centerville Road, and happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. And I will wrap it up by also acknowledging, congratulations to all the students and the staff that were honored here tonight and acknowledged for the work that you do in our schools. We appreciate you. And to also expand on Mrs. Spall's point about the purchase of eighty-seven-hundred Centerville Road, I did want to let everyone know that we have a detailed summary of what we're talking about here. We voted in August of last year to purchase eighty-seven-hundred Centerville Road. The purchase of this building would save the taxpayers money over time. We feel it's a very good decision, but we rely on city council to appropriate those funds. They have yet to take it to a vote, and they have pretty much let us know that they're not going to. But I think that they owe the public an answer on that, and the school board. So if you would like to take a look at that, it is located on the mcpsva.org site, under School Board, Options for Central Office. And that will end our meeting with a closed session. Can I get a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas enter closed session.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 2223-0327. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. We are in closed session. Thank you for coming this evening. Happy Valentine's Day.